I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Channel 99 and AT&amp;T U-verse in the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Alva Nelson for the roll call, but before she does the roll call, something that I did not do in pre-council, we have two new people or persons that's working for the City of Gaston, working for the City Council, and we want to introduce them to you now. We have Chamberlain Parker, and we have Mike Rogers. And they'll be working for the city and working with the council and doing different other things within the City of Gaston. And so, we just want to welcome you to our council, our council meetings, and to the City of Gaston. At this time, we call on the, we call on, and we welcome our city clerk back.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here, and welcome back, Alva.
Thank you. Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Back is absent today. Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Cannon to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. I must gracious heaven, Father, we thank you, Lord, for the day that you've given us here today, God. We ask you to be with this council meeting, God, and all these council members, God, and everyone here today, God. God, we just want to thank you for everything you're doing for us this week, Lord, and you're gonna do for us, God. We ask, Lord, that you'll be with a special person, one of our good friends, Dale Nelson. He's in the hospital. He's been there over a week, God. We ask, Lord, that you bless him, Lord. Heal him and get him back home safely, God. We all love him so much, God. Thank you for that, God. We love you, God, and we praise you, and we worship you for everything. It's for your name and for your sake I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll call on Mr. Golden to come and give us an update for our COVID-19 and EMA.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see you again. I wish it was under better circumstances, but so is the world we live in today. We are up on cases, no doubt about that. The numbers for Alabama continue to rise. The numbers for Etowah County continue to rise. In Alabama, we have 236,865 total cases. Of those, 3,472 people have died. In the last 14 days, there have been 30,785 new cases across the state. Hospitalizations to date, almost 24,000, and it's presumed recovered about 91,000 in the state that are presumed to be recovered. That's, and I don't know how they get that number with 236,000 cases, but that's what the Health Department says. In Etowah County, today, 6,005 total cases with 64 deaths. In the last 14 days, Etowah County has had a surge in COVID cases. 1,042 new cases in the last 14 days.
Wow.
To break that down, the last two weeks, November 17 was 473, November 24 was 565 today. We're still in the high category, of course. Our averages of infection per age group are still running about the same. The 25 to 49 still leads that with a 38 percent of all those infected. It's no, it's no laughing matter as we approach the holidays and people get together, families try to get together. And we're trying to encourage everyone to, if they can practice any kind of safety measures during the holidays, to try. I know personally we've adjusted what we do, so I'm sure a lot of other people have. We are averaging in Etowah County almost 60 new cases per day. That's per day. So by this time next week, count it up, seven times six, 420 new cases at least, if not more. And probably we'll see those numbers rise as results from Thanksgiving events come through. Any questions?
Yeah, the hospitalizations. How many, we have in the hospital and both hospitals that you know?
We do not have that count. That count is, is not public record that I know of. It will be on the conference call tomorrow. You can get that count. That call will be at 11 o'clock. If you're not on the call list, you can email the EMA and ask to be put on that call list, ema@cityofgaston.com. That's, I mean, that's, the hospitals are private businesses, and without authorization, I can't give you those numbers here.
Well, is it fair to say it's up?
Yes, it's fair to say it's very high. I can tell you this, one of our healthcare facilities is using over 500 gowns a day for their staff members to examine people. For staff members that are wearing, they're burning through over 500 a day. That's, and that's gonna be the norm for a while. That's 3,500 gowns a week. That's a lot of material, either paper or disposable, or cloth or disposable plastic of some type, but it's, it's very expensive. The costs continue to rise on buying that type of material. It will become scarce again, probably. Anything else? Please consider distancing your shelves at Thanksgiving. I know that's a hard thing to ask for, for people that, a lot of people haven't seen their families in six months. We'll just have to stay the course on this. All right. Well, with that, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Not really. From, from Ms. Gaither and the EMA, we do wish you all the best, and we are thankful for our blessings. And, and we will see you next week.
All right. Thank you.
Madam President, as he walks away, I'll just, I'll just say this. Please remember that every case number that you hear on there represents a real person. They're not numbers. They represent a real person with a family and with considerations that they have to be responsible for. And any infectious disease that is as deadly as what we're facing has the potential to be devastating for those families. So please keep all that in mind. I'm not trying to, you know, sell a horror story or, or an expressly negative scenario, but we have to be considerate of the fact that we're, we're in the midst of, we're about to go back to March and April levels to a lot of what we're experiencing, and, and we need to hunker down and bear it out until we can get through this.
Okay. Thanks again for the, for the update. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Human Relations Advisory Committee, the work session, and the council meeting that was held on November the 17th.
Shall move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of November the 13th through the 19th.
Shall move. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Okay. We do have a proclamation. Is Michelle Sumner, the Administrator of Comfort Care, here?
This is a proclamation from the City of Gaston. Whereas in a year that has been beset with the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, the U.S. hospice and palliative care community has met this challenge and continuing to serve patients and families in need of the person-centered care they provide. And whereas more than 40 years hospice and community-based that palliative care provider have helped provide comfort and dignity to millions of people providing personal and family-centered care in an increasing, fragmented, and broken healthcare system. And whereas the interdisciplinary team model at the core of hospice and palliative care provision involves a holistic approach to treatment, including expert medical care and symptom control, as well as attending to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and psychological needs, and provide family service like respite care and bereavement counseling. And whereas palliative care delivers expertise to improve quality of life and relief from pain can be provided anytime during an illness, and hospices are more of the best providers of community-based palliative care. And whereas 1.5 million Medicare beneficiaries living with life-limiting illness, and their families receive care from the National Hospice Program throughout the medical hospital benefit every year in the U.S. And whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that have helped individuals make decisions about the cure they want. And whereas the Centers for Medical Care and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospices, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patients' choice and access to individualized services based on a patient's unique care and needs and wishes. Now therefore, Mayor Sherman Guyton do hereby proclaim November the, November 2020 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month in Gaston and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families, and observe this month with appropriate activities and program. Signed by Sherman Guyton. Mayor attested by Alva Nelson, City Clerk.
Thank you.
Well, I wouldn't expect to not have to say anything, but we do appreciate y'all taking the time to honor November as Hospice and Palliative Care Month. Our goal is to obviously provide excellent care and to increase awareness on hospice and end-of-life decision-making. Thank you, guys.
I'm legal.
And don't leave, I held your pen in my hand, so here's, here's a pen also. Right there. Okay. We have two items that are listed under unfinished business. The first item is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 114 Pioneer Street in District 1. And this resolution was tabled for 30 days on October the 20th. What is the pleasure of the council? I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to, I'm sorry, those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
No council action is necessary regarding a resolution abating nuisance on property at 812 Hilliard Street in District 3. The nuisance has been abated by the owner. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1804 Arizona Street in District 1. Ernestine J. McCain, Thomas being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in April of this year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Before we go to the clerk, I'd like to ask the attorney, in cases where there's, there's, that people are deceased, that there's just property, what happens to that property in the long run? And we're, for some reason, there's nobody to come and claim, but there's taxes being paid on it, but it's, the location of the owners cannot be located, and they are presumed deceased.
Well, we, if we know where their address is, and certainly we will contact them, but typically if someone who, for example, lives outside the city or someplace and is paying the taxes, typically the tax relative mechanic will change to reflect that person's address. Now, it can be a situation where they're just paying taxes and not request a change of, of address, but then they wouldn't get the tax notice and how much they did. So what we do is we do a title search, and we notify the numbers that show up in the title search, as well as any lien holders, like a mortgage. And we also check the tax trails and notify anybody who shows up on the tax trails. And that's what is required of us under law.
Clerk, do we have a motion? I, we had a motion.
I didn't record one.
I'll make a motion to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
No council action is necessary regarding a resolution abating nuisance on property at 812 Hilliard Street in District 3. The nuisance has been abated by the owner. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1804 Arizona Street in District 1. Ernestine J. McCain, Thomas being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in April of this year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Before we go to the clerk, I'd like to ask the attorney, in cases where there's, there's, that people are deceased, that there's just property, what happens to that property in the long run? And we're, for some reason, there's nobody to come and claim, but there's taxes being paid on it, but it's, the location of the owners cannot be located, and they are presumed deceased.
Well, we, if we know where their address is, and certainly we will contact them, but typically if someone who, for example, lives outside the city or someplace and is paying the taxes, typically the tax relative mechanic will change to reflect that person's address. Now, it can be a situation where they're just paying taxes and not request a change of, of address, but then they wouldn't get the tax notice and how much they did. So what we do is we do a title search, and we notify the numbers that show up in the title search, as well as any lien holders, like a mortgage. And we also check the tax trails and notify anybody who shows up on the tax trails. And that's what is required of us under law.
Clerk, do we have a motion? I, we had a motion.
I didn't record one.
I'll make a motion to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1008 Slusher Avenue in District 2. And this is the State of Alabama and possible right of redemption of Thomas Martin, subject to mortgage in favor of American Journal Finance, being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in January of this year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
If you look on your agenda, there's Item 12 and 13 that we'll look at and consider together. Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement on properties located at the following location. This is 1402 Pierce Avenue in District 5, Daisy, Albayla, and David Lipskin, and Carol Jamie Cortez being the last known owners, and also 1404 Pierce Avenue with the same names being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this, these resolutions? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, this case involves two mobile homes, I'm sorry. This case involves two mobile homes on the same parcel owned by the same individual. We've actually, this is the second owner we've dealt with in the last 14 months. We filed this particular case in February of 2019. There was a building permit taken out in June of 2019. There were some minor repairs done to the exterior of the mobile home units. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I, I would like to move to abate these. I just want to say to all my friends over there that say we're never addressing these single wide trailers over here, this is two more. And I know this adds to the list of several that we've taken out of that neighborhood, so please don't forget that. We are working on it, trying to clean it up. So move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
All right. We have Item 14 and 15 that we will look at and consider for ordering abatement on these properties, and they're located at 3504 West Megan Boulevard, 3506 West Megan Boulevard in District 6, both in District 6 and 3600 West Megan Boulevard in District 6. This, the first two is John D. Smith III and Ron Davis Salvador being the last known owners. The second one is John D. Smith III being the last known owners. And the third one at 3600 West Megan Boulevard is, is the Third Properties LLC and Sandra L. Salvador being the last known owners. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to these resolutions? Is there one speaking in favor?
Madam President, this, these cases involve trash and debris. And just for the record, on Item 163600 West Megan, Third Properties LLC is actually John D. Smith, and that's the reason I asked that these cases be heard together. We filed the case, we've dealt with these prob, these properties for some time now. Actually, this case was initiated at the request of the property owner. He has dealt with, this is rental property, he's dealt with the tenants there for a number of years, trying to get them to clean up, and asked us to take a look. And, and so, we, we got involved, and we'll, we'll be asking today for a separate resolution for each location. Give us the authority to go on the property and clean it up. Thank you.
Okay. Is, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt on all three. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all three resolutions, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three.
Our next resolution is awarding bid number 3447 for the University of Alabama Center lower roof and the elevator re-roofing project. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Midwestern Commercial Roofers and Company at the amount of $38,820,000. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Shall move.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Did we get a second?
Second.
Okay. I knew I didn't hear one. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is our first reading, an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 1309 River Street. Sandy Was, Watson has offered $1,250 for the property. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Is there any new business? Councilwoman, will you?
Yes, Madam President, we do have one item that I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's an ordinance amending our fiscal year 2021 budget. I'd like to ask that we consider that today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote for consideration.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I've actually got a couple here. One is an ordinance amending the city code to establish a no parking zone on the north side of Transport Street from Highway 77 to the dead end. I'd ask for immediate consideration of that.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I've actually got a couple here. One is an ordinance amending the city code to establish a no parking zone on the north side of Transport Street from Highway 77 to the dead end. I'd ask for immediate consideration of that.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote for consideration.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And Madam President, I got one more, but just for a quick clarification on that, this is actually the dead-end road in between the Petro Station and the Jacks there off of Highway 77, which will eventually be the entrance to the new Church of the Highlands property. And a lot of those 18-wheelers and tractor-trailers park on that dead-end street right now, so it's necessary to declare that a no parking zone so that the Church of the Highlands will have uninterrupted access to that, that entrance. So, the second one, Madam President, is a resolution authorizing a tax abatement agreement with the Renco, Renco Group, doing business as Antiva Products. They've got a $4.6 million expansion underway out there that will create several jobs, so this would, I'd ask for immediate consideration on this.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be numbered saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any department reports? Committees? We have a citizen request, Mr. Buster Poach, Community Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Madam President. As all of you know, I'm Craig Scott, Director of the Gaston Public Library. But I'm not here for the library. I'm here just as a citizen and as a very proud member of the Community Thanksgiving Committee, along with Buster and with Darlene. It was a very hard decision for our committee this year not to move ahead with Community Thanksgiving, but it was the right decision to do. As all of you know, many of you have volunteered your services at Old Convention Hall or at the venue, and you know what takes place there with hundreds of volunteers, and then serving those out in our community who really need a Thanksgiving meal, especially the elderly, the disabled, the homebound. So, these are very much folks who are at risk. And we, as a committee, and we are not affiliated with the United Way, we are not affiliated with the city whatsoever, but we, as a committee, made the decision that we should not move ahead with Community Thanksgiving this year. Instead, we've, we have elected to help support other organizations, some churches in our community who are going to serve Thanksgiving in their communities. Our originating church was New Liberty Tabernacle in East Gaston over 22 years ago when they began this. Our originating church was New Liberty Tabernacle in East Gadsden over 22 years ago when they began this. And it grew to, to over 6,600 plates that we served last year. So we're going to support New Liberty and we're going to support the Carver Center. We're going to support First Baptist in Glenco. And then also Mercy Depot, which is a part of Cornerstone Church with, with contributions that have come into us. We're going to turn those contributions over to those organizations so they can, they can help get meals out to the, to the folks. Also, I want to mention, this pandemic has made our small committee grow up. Next year, we're going to be bigger and better. In, in order to do that, we have realized that we can't just be a committee of 22 folks. We need to be a certified IRS nonprofit, 501(c)(3). So we have applied for certification on that. We're going through the process to become that nonprofit. We're going to form an official board, have officers and, and many good committee members that will be chairs of our various departments. And, and again, make it bigger and better than, than you've ever seen before. I also want to apologize, the three of us want to apologize to the city. You guys, the city council, the mayor's office, you've all taken a lot of heat because a lot of people don't realize that we're, it's just our committee that puts this together. A lot of folks are complaining that the city's not having Community Thanksgiving this year. You know, rant, rant, rant. No, it's not the city, it is us. We are the ones to blame. And again, we did it for good reason.
I want to say thank y'all. We could not do this without the help of the city. Y'all help us with various reasons and we thank you for that for the past. Again, we do apologize for causing you any, any flak because that was not intentional. But we just felt in our hearts that we could not feed to the number that we've always fed and keep people safe. And our number one concern is yes, feeding people, but keeping people safe is our main concern. So again, thank you. We are very sorry and we are so looking forward to partnering. We've already on the calendar for the venue for this upcoming year. So thank you again for all that you do for Community Thanksgiving.
Well, now, I'm the one that's on the agenda. But this, this year, 2020, I think we can all agree that we had to make unpopular decisions throughout, whether it's at your home, here for the city. But it really surprised me, and you know, I have a few years in and around politics, but it never really surprised me when the public hears about certain things and they blame government. I was, I have been there. And I just wanted, again, to apologize to the mayor, to the council and to the city that we, the planning committee of the Thanksgiving dinner, we are the one that made the decision not to have it because we didn't want to be construed as starting a new rise in this virus. And that's what would have happened. So we made a decision not to have it. But we are making a decision for 2021, we will be back. And we will be back stronger, as was just stated. So we want to thank the city, we want to thank the council, we want to thank the 6,600 people last year that was fed. We are coming back, we will be back. God willing and the creek don't rise, let them get rid of this virus because we are coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have remarks or announcements by the council. Councilman Reed.
Everybody knows about trash right now, getting down to that. Everybody, please be patient based on the equipment we've got, which is good. And the employment that we've got right now, we're, we're down a few. Please be patient in that respect. We will get to you on trash and leaves. On a note that I speak about most every week, Carol Huckabee of the Paws for Pets. She's a rescue mission, they're working real hard. They need some volunteers to come down to walk the puppies and so on and so forth. These dogs are picked up off the street and she puts them through the vets, gets them spayed, neutered and cleaned up, and they ship every one up north. We don't have to worry about them on our streets anymore. So I'm just asking everybody, please do that. Donations to Number One Perkins Street in Alabama City, 35904. Please help her, she needs our help. And Adele Nelson, a buddy of mine, you just get well.
Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that I said a prayer for Dale Nelson when we started today. If Dale Nelson's your friend, you got a friend for life. I've been with him on a bunch of trips and stuff and he always is the same. You know, if he's there with you, he's going to be there with you forever. And I just hope Dale hurries and gets well because I've already talked to Councilman Reed. And as soon as he's well, he's going to take us out to lunch, Councilman Reed said. And I wish everybody happy Thanksgiving.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes, I have a couple of announcements and I'm trying to get them here together. First of all, the Thanksgiving meal, they just spoke about it, but it'll be at Carver Community Center from 11:00 to 2:00. And we also will have deliveries. I've gotten several calls already for deliveries. New Destiny will be serving Thanksgiving dinner also from 10:00 a.m. at the church there off of Goldenrod. And they will also give back groceries out. Then I have one more, Union Baptist, just had it, trying to find it. Right here, here we go. Union Baptist, 613 Henry Street, Gadsden, Alabama. Community Thanksgiving drive-through, which will be on Wednesday, November 25th, starting at 9:00 a.m. Will give away 100 bags of food. And our partners at the Gadsden Free Store will all give away clothes and items for personal hygiene to all. It's first come, first served. So those are the three announcements. And happy Thanksgiving.
Councilman, will you?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll echo the sentiments for Dale Nelson. We, we wish, wish him the best and definitely wish him a speedy recovery. Dale, Dale is indeed a good, good guy. You know, I, I still don't know how he, he was able to coerce Iva into marrying him, but he did. And, and so, you know, just because of that, we have to, we have to, we have to care about him. So we, again, we, we're wishing Dale a speedy recovery, man. Get, please get better. Also, do want to encourage everyone to be, to be safe. Thank you, Councilman Worthy, for announcing those, those events. As I watch the news and, and hear some of the reports of, of people that are now using our food banks and, and boxed food giveaways at a level that we've never seen before. You know, I want to, I want to encourage people to, if you can't be there physically to help hand out that food, please make it a point to try to contribute financially or do whatever you can to support these events. There was a, there was a family that was highlighted in a story last night. This family is traveling the state and they're basically following a circuit. Now, you can have whatever opinions you may about that, but this family, both the husband and wife have been out of work now for almost a year. And pretty much the way that they're able to feed their family is through these various food banks. And so it's, it's serious business and unlike anything I've seen in my lifetime. So again, those of us that have the ability, I know there are some concerns about being there physically and, and actually participating in the distribution of food. But where you can, support financially, support in other ways to make sure that, that we're truly operating in the spirit of Thanksgiving. And, and with that, I wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Please be smart this holiday season. That's all I have.
Okay, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to say congratulations to my friend Beth Ann for the opening of the alley here at the Gadsden Mall. That's been a project that's been a long time coming. We got a chance to go in and see it operating on all cylinders last night, man, and it's fantastic. It's got a huge arcade in there, about 20 bowling lanes, I think, plus or minus. Several other really cool sport events for family, family-friendly. They got food, they got a little alley bar there inside with the, with the food. I mean, it really is an awesome, family-friendly venue that, that we are very lucky to have in Gadsden. So for all those people that talk about how there's nothing for kids to do in Gadsden, this is the cream of the crop, man. It's the best, it doesn't get any better than that. So I encourage y'all to go check that out at the mall. Another thing I want to say, congratulations to the Gadsden Runners Club. They pulled off, I think, their second or third City of Champions Half Marathon this weekend. You guys who aren't runners like me, y'all have no idea how big and impactful these things are on our community, these races. I think they had 37 different states represented in the individuals that registered for the race. Couple of different countries, there's several thousand people here from outside of the city of Gadsden, running through our city, all through the most beautiful parts of it. It, it's just a great testament. And, and to make a point about the Gadsden Runners Club, they get zero financial support from the city or from any other agency. They, these are, again, just like the Community Thanksgiving group, these are just individuals in our community that have gotten together and they raise tens of thousands of dollars a year for charities in our community and they get nothing in return, other than somebody making them run 13 miles. And that's just crazy to me. So thank you guys for what y'all do for the community. Also want to applaud the, the Community Thanksgiving Planning Committee for making that tough decision. I know that, that you guys take a lot of pride in what you do and you should. And I know it's tough when you can't do it. So kudos for being entrepreneurial in your spirit and pivoting and still trying to do what you can to get the assistance out to the community. And on that note, as some of you guys may know, every year for the past several years, I have hosted a Feed the Need program just before the Christmas holidays at my business here downtown. We are still working to, our intention is to pull that off the week before Christmas. It's a little bit different than the Community Thanksgiving in that we're not preparing finished foods so we can social distance a little easier when preparing the boxes. And also, it's a little more efficient in that we give out enough food for an entire family to cook at home. So for every one car in the drive-through, we're actually feeding five or six people with that box. So we feel like we can do it effectively and safely with a contactless drive-through drop-off. So we're going to try to pull that off. So stay tuned for that. I'll give you guys more information over the next couple of weeks about, about that coming to fruition. Also, Dale Nelson, man, get well soon. And the only thing I'll say that I believe no one else has set up here that will certainly ensure that he's out of the hospital by the end of this weekend. And that is, we have an Iron Bowl game this weekend. And Dale is a fine Auburn man. And I know that he wouldn't, he wouldn't live to, to watch that from the hospitals. He'd rather be at home. So I know he'll be out by Friday for sure. And, and last thing, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Please wear your masks. We say this every week. I'm just begging you guys to have some compassion. I understand that this has somehow become a politically charged conversation. But the fact is, 64 human beings from Edrawal County have died from this that would otherwise be alive. We can stop this. We can prevent those deaths from happening. If a bus wrecked on Rainbow Drive tomorrow and 64 people died in it, it'd be one of the biggest tragedies this city has ever seen. But the fact that it comes in these small incremental waves over the last seven or eight months, nobody seems to notice it. Please, 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 just wear your mask and social distance. We've got vaccines on the way. I know they're going to start administering some of those as early as the end of December, 1st of January. Can you imagine being the last person to pass away from COVID-19 before you got your vaccination? Or before we wipe this thing out of the earth? We've got two months left. Please, wear your mask, hunker down for the next eight weeks and this will be in our rearview mirror going into 2021. Thank you, Madam President. That's all I have.
Councilman Wilson, would you just announce also about the, the grant that Governor Ivey?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I do want to mention that to the small businesses. There's a very small window. But you, for those of you who don't know, a couple of months ago, as part of the initial CARES Act funding that the federal government sent to the states, the state of Alabama started a small business relief fund. I think that initial round of grants was $15,000 eligible for small businesses. They have reopened that application process. They have another $200 million that they're giving away. And I think they, in the form of a grant, and I think they've upped the total amount that a small business can receive from $15,000 to $20,000. But again, you, you have a very small window. I think it's only about 10 or 12 days. And we're inside that window now. So if you're a small business owner in this community, go to, I believe it's MyAlabamaTaxes or MyALTaxes.com and you can log in with your business tax identification number. It's super quick. It takes about five minutes to click the buttons and hit submit and you'll get a check from the state for $20,000. There are some prerequisites there. If you've already gotten a PPP loan or if you've already gotten an economic injury disaster loan from the government, maybe you might not qualify. But even if you have, you could still qualify for this fund. So please, take five minutes, go research this stuff. It could bring, I know from the PPP program and the economic injury disaster loan program, hundreds of millions of dollars were pumped back into this community. That's our tax dollars that we paid into the federal government that came back into this community to help save small businesses. So please, reach out, go through the proper steps. I know it can be cumbersome with a lot of red tape sometime, but go through the steps and get that money back into the city of Gadsden and help keep those jobs and grow them. And one last thing, I apologize. Immediately following this, we have another virtual meeting of the Human Relations Advisory Committee. Ms. Camille Agricola Bowman will be speaking via Zoom conference call with the group. She is a legendary preservationist. She has worked at the highest levels of government in Alabama, Virginia and North Carolina, specifically on ideas of historical preservation, what to do with things like controversial monuments and, and stuff like that. So she is a native of Gadsden who has lived all over and, and has a degree from Columbia University. And now she's back in her retirement here. And we're very lucky to be able to hear her thoughts on, on some creative solutions that could make this community, everybody in the community happy moving forward. So that begins immediately following this meeting. There was a public notice sent out with the link to the Zoom meeting. So if you want to find that public hearing notice, you can find the link there. Thank you.
Due to the Thanksgiving holidays, the Thursday garbage route will be collected on Wednesday and Friday's pickup will not change. If there's nothing else.
I'm sorry, Madam President. I forgot. Just found out that the Wielder Cross is closed. So what we're going to do, we're going to take about six to seven plates, to-go plates over to Elliot on Thanksgiving Day about 12, 12:30 for the homeless population. So please, if you're knowing about the homeless, let them know. Because I just thought about doing this after I found out that the Wielder Cross is closed.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Real quick, Madam President, I just want to, we overlooked Ms. Melba in the city clerk's office.
Sure did.
I know she is still in the hospital, struggling with pneumonia, I believe.
Yes.
And several other issues. So please keep Ms. Melba from the city clerk's office in your prayers as well.
I apologize. I had her name written down too, but I'm glad you reminded us. But there's a lot of, as we say in church, there's a lot of sick and shut in. And so we just need to remember them in our prayers. Here again, prayer changes things, whether you believe it or not, even in government. Prayer changes things now.
Yes, ma'am.
Now.